Good evening and welcome to the February seventeenth Bloomington Planning Commission Meeting. The Planning Commission advises the City Council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning and transportation issues. Some items the Planning Commission has the final decision authority for, and others the City Council will make that final decision. The Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteers that are appointed for three-year terms and may serve up to a maximum of six years. Tonight, we have one public hearing and three additional study items, but before we begin tonight, let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and before we begin tonight, as usual, we are in a hybrid meeting environment, so I'll have Mr. Mark Agard explain to those that may be wanting to have public comment tonight for our items. Mr. Mark Agard?
Sure, Mr. Chair, we are open, so anybody could come here to the City Council chambers and testify. We have nobody here so far, but we have one public hearing item for tonight, and you can also call in and testify remotely if you'd like. What you would do is call the number on the screen, 1-415-655-0001. Once you are there, you would enter in the access code, 2458-690-8143, and we will have these numbers scrolling across the screen throughout our first public hearing item.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mark Agard. And before we begin, I should just note that for the public, if you do wish to speak on an item, the Chair does recognize that if there are more than one person speaking, I may limit time to three minutes so that everybody has an opportunity to speak to an item. And with that, we'll move into our items for tonight. And our first item, which is a CUP for a school, yes, Commissioner Corman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I am going to be abstaining from this item tonight.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Corman, for letting us know that. And for the public at home, we do still have a quorum for this item, so we can move forward. Mr. Johnson, could you give us a staff report?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Solberg. Can you see my shared PowerPoint screen here?
Yes, we can.
Great. The application, item number one on your agenda this evening is a conditional use permit and final site and building plans for a new school use to create a school campus at two existing office warehouse buildings located at 10640 and 10700 Lindale Avenue South. New Century School is the applicant. New Century School is an existing public charter school in St. Paul, and they desire to open a second satellite location. I don't know offhand the enrollment at their St. Paul campus, but with this application in their materials, they noted that anywhere between, forgive me, here, 150 and 275 students could be served by this school campus. It would serve pre-kindergarten through middle-school students, and New Century School is a STEM-focused public charter school, so just to note that, give you kind of description of the applicant. The sites themselves, again, these are the two sites on Lindale, the addresses I noted. This is located just to the south off West 106th Street, so it has very close access to the freeway, to 35W. Those are the two existing office warehouse buildings. The building to the north, 10640, is more of a traditional office warehouse split-type building, and the building to the south is more currently an office building. Both of these sites are zoned C4. West 106th Street is a arterial roadway. This portion of Lindale Avenue is only actually classified as a local road, although it does have some design criteria that's not typical of a local residential street, for example. In terms of other surrounding uses, there are some townhomes to the east of this area, as well as a residential care facility to the east as well, some other single-family residential uses further to the northeast, and then other office warehouse buildings, north and south. I do want to point out that the 10640 site currently has shared access with the other office warehouse building. Those buildings were developed in tandem. There is a write-in-only off 106th Street to that site to the north as well. So some of what we're going to be talking about this evening is how to integrate a school campus kind of adjacent to those uses, and as I noted, the sites are zoned C4. Getting a closer inlook, the way, we'll get into the architectural plans here, but the way that they're proposing to create this campus is to provide the pre-kindergarten through elementary school in the northern building, as well as some of the kind of communal or common amenities, if you will, and then the building, the southern building on the campus would be the proposed middle school. Getting to the land use component as to why a conditional use permit is required, a school is a conditional use in the C4 zoning district, just to note that school is one of the uses designated in our code that does have to obtain approval from the City Council, so this is a City Council action. You are advising the City Council on this application. Yeah, and oh, just to note that final site, and whenever there's site improvements for final site and building plans, those should be reviewed in concert with the conditional use permit, so that's why that application is included as well. Getting to the site plan that they put forth in their civil set, so I've highlighted just a few key things that are related to some of the ways that they would modify the site, some of the key site improvements. First thing I want to highlight, and we'll have a separate slide on site circulation here next, but you can see there's both an eastern and a western connecting driveway being proposed, and that's in order to provide site circulation between the two sites, as well as allow egress or ingress to the site, to the northern building, from the southern site's driveway along Lindale Avenue South. So you can see those connecting, highlighted in yellow driveways there, that's important. There is some grade to navigate there. They have submitted some design work showing that some larger vehicles can circulate between those sites. Some of that's still under review with our engineering division. But just to note about the connecting driveways, they are showing an outdoor play area on the west side of the elementary school. They're highlighted in green, fenced in. They're showing bus and parent or student drop-off and pickup areas in blue. They're transitioning some of this to a one-way circulation with angled parking as opposed to the existing condition, which has more of a 90-degree and free-flow condition. As far as the access points themselves, again, you still have this shared access up at 10640 Lindale, right here on my screen, you can see that, and that condition will remain, however, it would be transitioned to a write-out condition only, and the driveway also to serving the southern site also is not proposed to change. Another thing to note here with the site plan is that they are proposing to provide some of their parking in the form of proof-of-parking. These parking stalls actually highlighted in red, it's 28 parking stalls. These are the only stalls that currently don't exist today. Now, some of the stalls on the site plan would be reconfigured to angled parking, so, but these are newly constructed parking stalls, if you will, and they propose to provide some of that supply in the form of proof-of-parking, 28 parking stalls. As long as I have the site plan here, one last thing to note, just on this slide, is that they are proposing to do some of these improvements in a phased fashion, not all the construction work for the schools would happen all at the same time. They're proposing to start, based on their materials, proposing to start with the middle school building, the southern building. From staff's perspective, a phased-style construction is acceptable so long as they do all of the associated site improvements that allows for the circulation and access and all the other kind of components that have been part of their application up to this point. So, staff does recommend that a phasing plan be approved by the city prior to the issuance of any permits out here. There we go. Here's the circulation plan before you. This is just showing bus circulation. In the school's materials, they said they plan to provide most of their transportation with six buses. Most of their student population arrives by bus. There is a limited amount of parent drop-off at New Century's current school, but they provide most of their transportation via bus, so they're stating six buses. The key with this circulation plan, and this is something that would need to be approved by the City Engineer and Traffic Division, but the key aspect of this, what's really important about this, is that to the, to every, you know, to the greatest degree possible, that the school traffic is separated out and kept separate and distinct from the industrial traffic to the north. The building to the north, as I noted, is an office warehouse building. It doesn't have above-average amount of large truck traffic than, say, a building of its type, but that being said, we still want to discourage or separate out that traffic as much as humanly possible, and that's the reason why access to the, between the two sites is so important. So, just a couple other notes about it. This circulation, as I noted before with respect to the grade, but all these connections do need to work for larger emergency vehicles, including fire apparatus. Because these are two separate and distinct sites, and it's something we'll talk about with parking too, but because these are two separate and distinctive sites, the city does need to have a perpetual shared access and circulation agreement between the two sites recorded, so you'll, you will see that in your conditions of approval, and kind of a more updated way that the city handles that is that the city be made a party in some level to those agreements, so that should one, for whatever reason, should one site be sold out to another party, you know, these agreements, conditional use permits run with the land, and so should the, if there was a different user for one of these two buildings, that that continued joint access would have to be continued in the future circumstance. So that is a condition of approval with related to the shared access and circulation. One of the things staff recommends, so as part of kind of the circulation plan, one thing staff would recommend is that the western parking stalls on the northern site be designated for employee parking, and the reason being is that one of the conduits or pathways towards that industrial traffic is more on the west side of the northern site. They are proposing speed bumps as well as do-not-enter signage, and some traffic control signage might be appropriate in other portions of the site as well, and that's something our engineering division will work with the applicant on. But one thing staff would recommend is designated those western parking stalls as staff parking, so that the people utilizing those stalls, you know, visit the site every day. It's the teachers and staff that work in the school, so that they're more familiar with the circulation and, you know, the potential for truck traffic in that location. Last thing I guess I'll say about this is that ultimately, whatever circulation plan does get approved, certainly as staff, we think we're on the right track with what they're showing here. There just might be kind of dialing in some operational details to make it function and work better, but ultimately, whatever does get approved, staff would highly recommend that those plans and requirements be communicated out to both staff and the parent population, whose children go to the school, and that way they just are aware that, you know, to the site to the north, there is the potential to be truck traffic and that they should avoid those areas. Getting to the floor plan, you can see I color-coded the different uses. It's pretty typical for what we see for a school use. In yellow is the large, and this is the north building, by the way, on the elementary and pre-K, or pre-K through elementary. The yellow is the large multipurpose space. That's really the space that drives a lot of parking demand as well as, from the city code perspective, as well as would host kind of all of the, any potential school events or activities, you know, science fair, parent-teacher conference type of thing. It would be hosted in that multipurpose space there in the middle. There also is showing a kitchen in the elementary school building. It looks like with space and ability with kind of more equipment than the southern building, so we've been in communication with the applicant about the requirements for cooking at the site. Should they do more, should they not be bringing food in? Some schools choose to cater food in for these reasons, but should they be doing cooking on-site, they need to get approval of all their equipment through our environmental health division in the form of a food service plan, as well as may need to install a external grease interceptor. This is what protects the city's sanitary sewer system from grease and other oils and fats and things like that that happen in the cooking process. It can be discharged. That's what I'll note about the kitchen. Otherwise, you know, lockers, conference spaces, classrooms, labs, very common what we see from a school use. This is the south building, middle school, some offices and staff areas as well, a warming kitchen, for the most part, planned for student classrooms and labs and those types of uses. Excuse me. Here's the parking table that we provided in your staff report. They are providing a code-compliant amount of parking, a little actually above, with the 28 proof-of-parking stalls, so should the city support the proof-of-parking solution? Staff is supportive of it, but should that go forward, they would need to enter into a proof-of-parking agreement. Similar to the shared access and circulation agreement that they need to enter into, the, between the two sites also needs a shared parking agreement, and the reason for that is that the northern site actually has 74 parking spaces, but the parking requirement for that site per code is higher than the parking supply on the northern site, and again, that's driven by that larger multipurpose room. And so they need to have a shared parking agreement recorded between the two properties, again, city party to that, so that, that there's an adequate parking supply for these two buildings and the broader campus going forward. Just to note that unlike other, unlike some other school and kind of community-type uses, they have enough parking to not have a non, if you're familiar with the non-concurrent use condition, like we've talked about in the past, which kind of limits which activities happen, when and where, this campus has enough parking that they do not need to look to those types of solutions, so just to note about that. They are proposing to bring the sites into conformance with respect to the quantity of site landscaping, so there's just an exhibit showing the landscape plan. Other miscellaneous things we'll look at, full lighting compliance for the two sites would be required. I talked about the food and the grease. They do need to have code-compliant trash in both buildings, and there are some city code provisions and regulations that pertain to signage for school uses that, that would regulate signage in the future. So, with that, I have some two suggested motions, but I'm certainly happy to take questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Appreciate your staff report. With that, Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. Nick Johnson, quick question for you. Looking at the floor plan of the school, did I miss, is there a gymnasium in any of these plans for gym-type activities?
Yeah, Chairman Solberg, Commissioner Goldsman, I believe they use the multipurpose room for inside play, but I certainly welcome, or I would encourage you to, to ask the applicant about how they plan to do recreational activities at the school.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, will you go back to the circulation map? I was just a little confused about how the buses will be exiting. Are they exiting towards the north, or is it a in-and-out in that southern entryway?
Yeah, Chair Solberg, Commissioner Albrecht, the south access both serves as ingress and egress, so they're, they're kind of showing some of the turning movements, but the bus would double back to the south and exit out of the 10-700, the southern Lindale site. The write-out-only condition that's shown on the east side of the north building is really just intended, I think, for staff and automobiles. The buses would not circulate that way, and the reason being is that they have to double back west to go to the, to utilize that bus drop-off area. The south part of the north building is the, the main entrance. I can circle that area here. And so that's why they, they're heading westward in that one-way condition. They would head back southward and then exit out the southern site.
Thank you. One more question, Mr. Chair.
Please, go ahead.
So, so, all of the students will be dropped off on the north side of the building, or the north building, and then they will, if they're middle-school students, will walk across the parking lot to the south building? Is that the plan?
Chair Solberg, Commissioner Albrecht, that is my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
And there is a sidewalk connection on the west side. I've seen a revised plan that maybe pushes that sidewalk a little further to the west and has a little different orientation, but yes, there is a side, there is sidewalks and crosswalks in between the two buildings.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions for staff on this item? If not, Mr. Johnson, is the applicant with us tonight?
I hope so.
Mr. Chair, we have Mr. Bill Griffith here, representing the applicant.
All right, Mr. Griffith, are you there?
Just trying to unmute. There we go.
There we go, we got you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Commissioners Bill Griffith representing the applicant and the owner. This evening, we have just a brief presentation, and then we can answer any questions that the Commissioners have, including the couple of questions that were asked previously. Just a bit of background, the applicant and the landlord have been working on this plan for a year, and initially had proposed to use the northerly building solely for the campus. In discussing the access and circulation, the city staff recommended that we improve the access and circulation, and when the southerly building came on the market, negotiated with that owner to acquire the southerly building. What that allows to do, what allows the school to do is not only grow through the pre-K and middle school, but also improve circulation and access throughout the site. So it really is a better plan ultimately. It's taken quite a bit longer to get to this point, but it's certainly worth it in terms of providing for the growth of the school and improved access and circulation, particularly limiting conflict with the building to the north, the industrial building. With that kind of scene-setter statement, I wanted to introduce Dr. Ali, who is representing New Century School. He'd just like to give you a little feel for the school, just a few minutes on that, and then Ryan Anderson is going to discuss the questions regarding site circulation and drop-off, and then Vicky Katsanis is going to address the interiors. So with that, Dr. Ali, are you available?
Yes, I'm available. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to share our school proposal and plans. Briefly, we are currently located in St. Paul, and due to community requests and after needs assessment, we decided that there is a great need for our program to be replicated in the Bloomington area. Because of the success of our program, the MDE approved another primary site for our school, so we are proposing to start this new program in the Bloomington area to meet the needs of the school, I mean, needs of the community, specifically, community requests based on a STEM program that serves programs that address the needs and the aspirations of the potential students and the families as well. So, I just had that brief information to share. It has been long in the making. It took a couple of years for us to come to, to propose the site and the program, in that we have had some few families that were driving all the way from the Ridgefield, Bloomington, those areas, so we decided to take and replicate the success of our program in Bloomington, so that we take the services closer to the communities as opposed to some of those families that were coming to the St. Paul area. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we have Ryan Anderson, who is the site engineer. He can address any of those questions regarding circulation and drop-off.
Good evening, Mr. Anderson.
Good, glad, glad you can hear me. As Bill said, I'm Ryan Anderson with ISG, civil engineer for this project. We've been working with staff on this project for quite a while now, and they've been very responsive and useful in being creative and working with us on this project, so I'll say a quick thank you to Nick and staff for all the efforts up to this point. Certainly, this has been an evolving project with going from one building to two buildings, and also looking at how to interconnect these sites and create more of a campus with pedestrian circulation, as well as the buses and parent circulation amongst the sites. So, though we have a little bit of fine-tuning to do, we feel we have a very good concept that we are excited to move forwards with. I think Nick provided a very thorough introduction of the site. A few things in addition to what Nick had went over, I can touch base on our, we are adding some sidewalks between the two buildings that'll wrap more around the perimeter of the site, provide ADA accessible access between the two properties, as well as adding a sidewalk connection out to Lindale Avenue with, which will also be ADA accessible, which will connect onto the new path that'll be going down Lindale, down to the river and the Minnesota Trails down there, but understand the city's putting that in in the next year or two perhaps, so that'll be a nice addition for the students as well and people in the neighborhood. Some of these small upgrades that are, that are being done here, as well as the addition of the outdoor play area on the west side of the north building, a small stormwater infiltration basin south of the south building to meet our stormwater requirements, otherwise just general site improvements to improve, you know, ADA accessibility, bringing the site into code when it comes to landscaping and lighting, and ultimately, we're really looking forward to this project. I did hear the question from Commissioner Albrecht regarding the circulation. Again, we feel we have a good plan in place from an overall standpoint. Look at fine-tuning some of the details and working on staff on that. As we have a setup now, all drop-offs would be done on the north building, and certainly if the south building opens first, we'll come up with a temporary condition that maybe will allow for more convenient drop-off in the interim. We'll work with staff on that. Otherwise, certainly, the north drop-off will be able to work at that time, and will be constructed with the Phase 1 improvements. So, with that, I guess I'll turn it over to Vicky, and I'm just happy to answer. And I'm just happy to answer any questions here at the end of our presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Vicky Katsanis, and I'd like to kind of talk about the interiors of the spaces. Nick, would it be possible for, thank you very much. So as you're looking at the middle of the bottom of this particular building, this is the north building. And actually, in Phase 1, this is where we would start with the construction to try to get this particular building up and running first. There are still tenants within that southern building at this time. And to, because of the timeframe and when school is starting, we need to, I think, work on this one first. So it's re-looking at all of the ceiling within the space, updating that, kind of raising those ceilings a little bit, adding, we've got approximately seventeen, excuse me, seventeen to, I'm sorry, twelve to fourteen classrooms in elementary and about six classrooms in pre-K and kindergarten. So the elementary school would be over on the right-hand side of the plan. The pre-K would be over on the left side of the plan, closer to where the play area is. The kitchen area next to that multipurpose room, and that multipurpose room would be their gym area also, would be more of a warming kitchen and no food prep is at the site. And we do have a location for trash and recycling inside the building in this location. That would be over on the northwest side of the building. So more open as you're walking into the space, you have more of an information welcome desk with some seating for students to gather possibly in locker areas. And then kind of going, so we've got this nice open area hallways with lockers for the students to be able to pass by each other. Plenty of toilet rooms facilities within the space. And I think, and plenty of exits, entrances and exit areas within this the site in this building. Nick, would it be possible to go to the south building, please? Thank you. So the south building is, would be the second phase remodeling of this, probably completed in 2023. We, most of the toilet rooms are existing. We would have to do some remodeling in one of them so that we can get the accessibility up to date within this building. But mostly, it's classrooms, a few offices, again, a warming kitchen. And that, a lot of the food service or dinnertime would be, the students would go at this point back to their classrooms. Otherwise, there's an open area where we've got a lab space that could be possibly put for some tables. So it's going to be probably a staggered type of lunch area, lunchtime. We do have, this is not the latest plan. And so we did develop a trash and inside trash area that would be over on the west side of the building, right next to that entrance area with a garage door so that, yes, thank you, Nick, so that we would have space available there. The other reason that this building would be in Phase 2 is it is currently not sprinkled. So we would need to add sprinklers in this particular building to make it allowable for an educational facility. And I think that kind of talks about it. And I would be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any at the end of the presentation.
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that concludes our presentation, and we're open for questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Griffith. You know, I'm gonna start with just first question as long as we're on the on the site plans here. And I really, it's unfortunate I have to ask it, but as you're designing the inside of this facility, what are the security procedures and how is this facility designed to protect children in case of some adverse event that might potentially ever take place?
I suppose I could try and address that. There will be a lock situation, but with always with egress going out into the the door locations. We need to talk to them about any camera situations, alarm systems and that. But it'd be probably very similar to what they have in their existing facility in St. Paul.
Dr. Ali, do you want to address what you're currently doing in terms of the security and safety of your students?
Yeah, all our, thanks, everyone. All our doors do have alarms, and we do have cameras inside and outside of the building. So we have a security personnel that monitor throughout the day for any, you know, unusual or suspicious, you know, activities that are going around. But at the same time, people, they are also, we have the main reception. And then to get into the inside of the buildings, they are locked. It's only through a switch that somebody can get to access to the rest of the building. So we want to, again, use similar security measures in order to mitigate any, again, potential, you know, issues that may come up.
Thank you, Dr. Ali, I appreciate that. And I assume if you go to the south building, will that be the same condition with the the reception area that's monitoring? Or is that different in that building?
Yes, it will be the same plan that we'll be adopting in both buildings.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll go to other commissioners, and I'm not sure who is first, so I'll go from top to bottom on my list. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One question I had for the presenters is the circulation plan you showed for buses coming and going. I don't have concerns about the circulation plan itself. Is there anything in the design that would prohibit an additional drop-off at the southernmost point there of the building? To have a drop-off at both buildings versus asking students to travel across multiple lanes of parking during, especially in the morning? But I guess my question is, is there anything in the plan that that would be prohibitive to doing that?
Thank you, Commissioner Roman, Ryan Anderson here. No, that, I think that's that's ultimately the goal, that would provide a better end product. And and one of the things that kind of developed here at the end of this was the proof of parking and us being able to reduce the amount of parking that we we start with. And certainly, we would look to possibly use, you know, the ability to be able to reduce on the parking in order to add a bus drop-off. So you don't want, need to have the students walk as far from the bus drop-off to the south school, especially when the weather is like it's been today and the last month, that's not enjoyable for anyone. So one of the reasons we don't have that space planned yet is determining what, where that entrance is, what makes the most sense. I understand the southern building will need some work done in order to bring the entrances into ADA compliance. So part of that will be determining what entrance is most suitable for the students, what makes the most sense with the floor plan. Also, just obviously, the circulation plan and having criteria for the buses. So although not determined quite yet, we do show the bus can circulate on three or four sides of the building. So we've got some options to work through.
Okay, I mean, yeah, it looks pretty much like there is a bus that would be able to do the south side potentially. I just was, again, thinking long-term. Then related to that, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Recognizing that perhaps the south buildings' planning and designs are farther behind the the north building. The north building, you know, it seemed pretty clear where there was demarcation for what I assume is lockers. I didn't see anything like that in the south building, which then ties to that question about if eventually you have the ability to do drop-off at the south building, does the design, is it currently allowing for something like that versus being a problem later? Again, just trying to think of how we potentially accommodate a secondary drop-off for the safety of children and if the design is not creating a problem for that.
This is Vicky Katsanis, and and yes, there will be lockers in that south building. You are correct, this building is behind in the design as it was just purchased.
Yes.
So, yes, it will accommodate locker areas and similar items that are in that north building.
Great, thank you.
All right, is that it, Commissioner Roman?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. This question is for Ms. Katsanis. Circling back to the gym question that I had. So one of the questions I have here is, would the middle school then utilize that general space for their gym activities? Or what is the plan for that secondary location in gyms for the middle schoolers?
Yes, the gym would be used by all students. And it's just taking a look at the timing of it. And obviously, student's growth will be, it'll be dependent on what the student growth, right, is of the the actual number of students that'll be enrolling right away. So, and that south building won't be used for the first year because we'll have to remodel that whole thing. So everybody will be in that first building using that particular gym. When the other one opens, the middle schoolers will be using the larger gym in that north building.
Great, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Cookton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This question is for Mr. Katsanis. When I look at the floor plan here for the the north building, it's a little complicated, sort of the typical programming layout architecturally for an elementary school with younger students. It's kind of, you know, two long hallways, easy to navigate, you're not going to get lost. Do you have any concerns about students not being able to find their way? Do you have plans for wayfinding, et cetera, to make sure students or students are having an easy time getting around?
Yes, we'll be doing some wayfinding within the building. I I don't have too many concerns with the way that it's set up at this point in time because there's more of a circular pattern in a lot of those areas. Especially over on the right-hand side, you have the circular kind of going around that core. But we do do wayfinding within the different, on the flooring. For example, especially with the younger kids, it's what we did over in the St. Paul location. So it helps them to understand kind of almost the lining up that happens outside. So, yes, to your answer, the students, or I'm sorry, the staff is is pretty involved in understanding what that wayfinding is.
Thank you.
All right, Chair Solberg here again. I question, maybe it's for Dr. Ali and maybe some for Mr. Anderson. So the the exterior site plan, I guess the circulation plan, Mr. Johnson, does show the the playground area. And I was just looking at that, and it looks like it's equivalent to about, oh, I don't know, ten or eleven parking stalls. It seems awful small for, I mean, even at a minimum number of elementary and and pre-K students. Can you tell us a little bit more about how your operations work in St. Paul? And maybe how that works with that?
Thank you, Commissioner. So we do have a schedule that different classes use the playground and the gym at different times. So we do not have, the playground we have in St. Paul is a little bit bigger, not so much big, but compared to what we have, which we are proposing. But what we always do is that we have a schedule in that every other class comes at a certain time. That's convenient for both the students and the staff.
Okay, so the playground time is scheduled, and and there's no concerns with, again, I look at it just from a size perspective, doesn't seem all that large. Your your operations, that that works?
Yeah, it does work, especially when we have small classroom sizes of about fifteen students. So we are not talking about thirty students or, so when we talk about the schedule, it's a small number of students who will be going to the playground at a time.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, Doc, Dr. Ali.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Abdi?
Thank you, Chair. I think this question is for either Mr. Johnson or the applicant. I was looking at the aerial view on Google for all three buildings. And I'm just wondering, how are you, yeah, what would be the separation? Is there going to be a fence? Because when I look at it from an aerial view or street view, it just looks like, I'm just wondering, like, how would you separate the two buildings so that if a child were to just like either run off or get drops off or doesn't actually go to, you know, walk into the building or has a late pickup or whatever the scenario may be, what separates a child from walking over to the next building? Because I don't, maybe I missed it in the presentation, but can you please address that?
Chair Solberg, would you like staff to answer to that first?
If you can, Mr. Johnson, that's great. And then if that's not sufficient, we'll go to the applicant.
No, I I appreciate the question, Commissioner Abdi. And the reason being is that I, you know, I think you heard the applicant say it's been a long process to kind of get where we are. And one of the reasons is, is that you have, in some cases, you'll have conflicting desires or goals or outcomes kind of, you know, make it challenging to to come up with what the best solution is. In the case of, you know, allowing that shared access on the north side of the building, that's why staff has emphasized how important the circulation plan is and how important it is to communicate that repeatedly and directly with staff and teachers, but also the parent population. And the the reason being is that one of the considerations that the applicant investigated was to potentially put up some kind of barrier, actually separating out the the sites from one another. But that's a solution that cannot be supported by the fire department and by emergency services. They don't want to have, vehicle barriers is not something that is in, that is not supported by by fire and and those folks. So that's why that solution ultimately could not be pursued. And I welcome the applicant to add whatever they would like to to that question as well.
Yes, this is Bill Griffith, representing the applicant. A great deal of time and energy has gone into the circulation design of the site. And I would like Ryan Anderson to kind of address all of the improvements that are going on the, between the north building, which is not owned by the landlord, call it the industrial building, and the first building, the the north building of the school. If you could just address those, the improvements that are intended to create a barrier between the two sites.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Yeah, certainly, providing the connections between the sites such that all of the buses, the buses and parent drop-off is occurring on the south side of the north building. It is really the the primary piece of this, the, and another piece of this operationally as well. The majority of kids will be dropped off and picked up by bus every day. Very few, based on the experience at St. Paul School, is very few students are dropped off and picked up by parents, although it does happen, and of course, you plan for it. Buses will be the primary way for students being dropped off and picked up, which is obviously a very controlled environment when it's done by bus on the south side of the building. Another thing to consider here too is, is really the way this is going to be set up. It's going to be very clear as to where students are supposed to be and where students aren't supposed to be through a combination of signs, striping, even just from a feel of the site. So if you are a parent who's dropping off the kid for the first time, you don't know where to go, it's going to be very evident that you are not entering on the northern access on Lyndale. You're not driving between the existing two buildings there that have loading docks facing you. It's going to even have a feel of this isn't a spot where a student goes. The south side of the building is going to be more warm and welcoming and is going to keep, you know, people in no way to drop off their kids, and ultimately, it'll be under a supervised condition. And as stated earlier, all the exterior doors are locked and alarmed. And it really should be a successful way to keep students and parents between the buildings in the designated areas. Hope that answers your question.
This is Vicky Katsanis, and I'd like to
Go ahead.
add something to that also. So where that playground space is, there is a a door that enters. So when the students are active within the playground, within the playground area, they don't necessarily have to go out into the parking lot to get to that. There are exits that go out for emergency sake, but they can go from the building to, so over, Nick, right between on the left-hand side and between the offices in green and that classroom down to the south in the blue. Those doors right there can go out into the playground. So they don't have to leave and go out into the the parking area to go out to the playground.
And just to reiterate a final point, it's the point we started with. And if we could go back to the circulation plan, the whole reason the southerly building was acquired was to shift the access and focus of access from the north of the north building to the south. And so that was a huge benefit of acquiring that southerly building in addition to allowing the, obviously, the school to expand and reach its full enrollment that's now planned. So that was a pretty significant acquisition on behalf of the school by the landlord to address the city's concerns regarding the issue that you raised, Commissioner.
Commissioner Abdi, further questions?
Thank you to staff and the applicant for addressing that. I'm having a hard time visualizing because the site is built for industrial and the buildings, you know, you're not proposing any exterior modifications to the site, based on what I'm hearing so far. And I'm not seeing a visual of what the barrier looks like as is right now. But I do understand how the circulation is based primarily on the north building's south-facing wall. So I do see that understanding. I'm trying to visualize the, how that plays out. And another question that I have from a land use component is, should the north industrial building uses change in that building? And if there's no licensing required for that type of industrial, then wouldn't that be in conflict? Or how do you then ensure that there's no conflict between the school and a different industrial activity that may go into the north building? How would that, and I know I'm foreshadowing things here from a land use perspective, but it doesn't have to be addressed right now. But I'm just concerned how, one, there is not a visual barrier that I see for the school between that property and the north building. And should the use change, what would that look like? And who would be informed? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Abdi. And I'm wondering if a bit of sage advice from Mr. Markergard or Mr. Johnson might help clear that up for you. Mr. Johnson, would you like to take a stab first or about how any change in use on the northern building might be affected or not affected with the school to the south?
I mean, yeah, Chair Solberg, Chair Solberg, one, Commissioner Abdi, one thing I can offer is that, you know, these sites are zoned C4 now. This is, maybe I didn't provide this context adequately at the beginning of the presentation, but this is a little bit of a unicorn in that these sites are zoned C4. These, there was, when these sites were rezoned, there was a special carve-out that was created that warehouse uses in the C4 prior, that were in existence prior to a certain date are allowed. And so the building to the north does not have all of the 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 uses afforded to it that for the typical industrial, industrial zoned site would have. It is zoned for commercial office type use. It just happens to be a, an old office warehouse building that the C4 zoning district was applied to it. So in terms of, you know, in terms of the northern building becoming a more intense industrial use, I don't think the C4 district, I don't think that would be consistent with the C4 district. There has been some discussion about, you know, on the basis of the school use being located there, that it may offer some restrictions on, you know, the storage of hazardous materials or things like that in the northern building. But I believe some of that was discussed or peripherally with that property owner on some of their inquiries, and that did not pose a great concern. So, you know, I think the base zoning districts offer some relief in that regard. And I'd welcome whatever Glenn, the planning manager, wanted to add to that. I don't know if it looked like he was poking you in the shoulder, but maybe I'm wrong.
Mr. Markergard?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was not poking your shoulder. I have nothing to add. Thank you.
All right. All right. Any further questions on this applicant, for the applicant in this particular case? All right, I'm not seeing any questions from commissioners. I appreciate all the applicants and representatives here tonight. Thank you, Dr. Ali, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Griffith, and Ms. Costanzas. I hope I pronounced that right. And with that, commission members will go ahead and open the public hearing. And not seeing anybody in the room tonight, I'll ask Mr. Markergard if there's anybody online that would like to speak to this item.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have three callers that we'll check in with, see if they have any public comments. So I will start with a phone number. It starts with area code 507-508. I will unmute you now.
No questions.
Hello?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And at this time, I will unmute a caller whose number starts at 612-251.
Hello, did you have testimony tonight?
Thank you very much. I have no comment.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And I will unmute the last caller. It looks like the name is Fozaya.
I couldn't find it.
Hello, do you have a comment tonight?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. All right, Mr. Chair, those are the only callers we have on the line.
All right, thank you, Mr. Markergard. All right, commission members, seeing nobody in the chambers and no additional callers online that wish to speak to this item, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner Albrecht?
So moved.
All right. We have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Commissioner Goldsman?
Second.
All right, commission members, we have a motion in front of us to close the public hearing. And a second, is there any further discussion on that? Not seeing any. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Motion passes. Public hearing is now closed on this item. Commission members, what are your thoughts on this item? There were a lot of questions. Certainly, the applicant was able to provide a lot of information for you. But what are your thoughts? Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think my primary concern was somewhat clear in my questions. I'm pretty uncomfortable with the idea that half of the students will be asked to go across three lanes of parking every day. And beyond that, I find this to be a fine reuse of the facility. I think it's a location on Lindale, it's easy access. I can appreciate that they, a lot of their students right now do not arrive by car. We heard the applicants indicate that one of the reasons that this was an attractive location is because a lot of their families are firm-blooming in Richfield. I expect we could see larger numbers of parents dropping off their children when it's much closer to home. So I'd be curious to hear what other members of the commission think about the the drop-off plan. You know, I do think it appears that there is a option to make it much more doable at the south building. But that's my main concern is, is that just find that to be perhaps a little too much of a safety concern, given that we're dealing with school-aged children.
Thank you. Commissioner Roman, Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I would echo what Commissioner Roman said. I think I posed a very similar question early on about students from the north building going to the south building. Though there are crosswalks and sidewalks, we all know that drivers get distracted. And I have a concern about that, too. However, I do think that there is, seems to be a good solution on that south side. And thank you, Commissioner Roman, for asking that. And so I, I am, I'm in support of this application, but would encourage both staff and the applicant to really look at that south side, particularly as an elementary and middle school where folks are not driving themselves to school. You know, the idea that they need so much more parking probably isn't needed. But the, I think that south side is probably a good, has good potential to do a drop-off and pickup so that there isn't so much traffic across, foot traffic across lanes of parking.
Thank you, Commissioner Albrecht. I think, Commissioner Cookton, are you next?
I'm not sure, but I'll go ahead. Didn't want to talk about the discussion about crossing the street. I will mention, one of the things that makes me a little more comfortable is that it's the middle school that's on the south side. So I don't know exactly what the technical definition of middle school is at this site, but typically that's sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And yeah, kids can be rowdy, but it makes me feel better than if the the little kids were going down to across the street. So it's older kids that are crossing the parking lot, and that makes me more comfortable with it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Cookton. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. And just to follow up with the circulation and drop-off, I have to say I am concerned as well with the the circulation drop-off between the two different schools and walking. The the other piece is that because the gym is only in that north building, there will be foot traffic outside of the pickup and drop-off, as well as any other type of activity using that large common area. So that's just one more concern that I have on on the application is the gym is only in that one, one building between the three rows of parking.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. I'm just, it's going to add one comment here. And I think maybe it's it's piling on a little bit of what we've already heard. I think having middle schoolers and having driven to drop them off, it's not necessarily the kids I always worry about, it's all the other drivers as well. And so looking at this site circulation, there's an awful lot of activity going on in a very small space. But I do think, yes, there are some, there is some ability to think about how middle schoolers would not have to walk across a parking lot during drop-off. As I hear the applicant's description, number of buses that they expect, I think that's certainly doable. I'm a little concerned that that isn't hashed out yet at this point because it's such a new acquisition on the south building. But maybe the point is, is that access circulation be reviewed by our, our city engineer and planning manager prior to moving forward, knowing some of the concerns that we have regarding that. The other issue, and I appreciate Dr. Ali, that I was concerned with initially seeing this and and why my initial question is really about safety of kids in the facility. And it's it's a terrible time that we have to ask that of the facility. We saw some detail there on the north building and I, with some assurances from Dr. Ali, that the same sort of activity with a welcome desk or, and locked doors will help on the south side. So the other issue that I am still somewhat concerned with, and I don't know if we're going to really need that many parking spots for this facility, but such a small playground, outdoor playground, and effectively next to the interstate, is just something that, I don't, I'm not quite sure it's right or not, but maybe that's something staff can look into in the future about where playground facilities are, where schools are in direct relationship to some of our highest-volume emitters of of particulate matter. So that's probably enough for now. So I, I'm not sure that I fully support this application at this point. But I am looking to hear some other thoughts from commissioners. So I think Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm not, I think, you know, the idea of, I agree with the idea of, I think it's a rather small outdoor play space. And I heard the applicant speak about small class sizes. And it's it's one thing for one class at a time to be out there. But again, I don't know how this school's day operates, but most schools I'm aware of private-public charter otherwise, do have a lunchtime recess type thing where you do have more than one class. And this may be different for them. But I don't know that you can expand that too much because I think there is a drive aisle through there. So that one is challenging. And as for the, you know, the moving between the buildings, I find I'm less concerned about children moving between the buildings during the day, whether they're going to a gym or a lunch, given that there's less traffic. But, you know, again, here, having heard what others said, and again, I know there's others who want to speak on this as well, I would, I would be willing or interested in potentially putting a condition of approval on a bus drop-off at the south building, especially given that that entire southern front of the south building is proof of parking.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Roman. Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roman has a way of reading my mind at times. I wanted to ask staff if they were comfortable or see any issues with us adding a condition of approval of an additional drop-off site at the south building.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. You guys are having a good discussion about this. I appreciate that. Just to like reiterate kind of what the key factors of other code compliance are, is you're correct that, you know, the area that maybe you want to have the drop-off is, is area that is being shown as proof of parking in order to comply with our city code. And so I appreciate the direction that the the condition idea has to go for it. And I think that staff is supportive of utilizing proof of parking for this, for this campus. The reason being is that the applicant very strongly believes that the amount of the supply of parking is above and beyond what they need to effectively operate. But one question I have is, is that if you make an area a, a, you know, a permanent bus drop-off, does it also still continue to have that ability to serve as a proof of parking area? That I don't know. Perhaps it's just, you know, removing, you know, say, these parking stalls here to create a bus drop-off area, or say, maybe it's only replacing those stalls there. But I guess the question I would have is staff is, does, can those stalls be proved somewhere else on site? Or are you effectively, say, you ever had to execute against a proof agreement, would you then have to remove that bus drop-off area? Because you still do continue need to maintain the drive aisle. So those are just my thoughts in that regard. I, I speak for myself, I think we support a bus drop-off. But we're also always just looking at the other elements of the city code and how to maintain compliance. I hope I didn't just confuse everyone even more.
Well, maybe just a little bit, Mr. Johnson. But so, yeah, with certainly providing the proof of parking and having a bus drop-off is the the point that you may eliminate those proof of parking spots. It wouldn't be code compliant. Is that what you're trying to say? I want to make sure I'm following you.
What I'm, what I'm saying is that I don't know if it, if an area can also be proof, can also be a permanent bus drop-off. In effect, if the planning commission thinks that a permanent bus drop-off is needed for the south building, I think it would be my perspective, they would have to be able to replace the the proof stalls that they need elsewhere on site in order to meet code or otherwise seek some other form of flexibility or reduction in their required parking. What I would say is that right now, at 206 stalls, they are, they are seven stalls above the parking requirement. The code requires 199 parking stalls for this site. So they do have some ability to lose, I believe, seven parking stalls at this property. And so that's the majority, say, of one of these areas here along the south. You know, you can count them. But so maybe it's just that they have to find a way to prove, you know, a couple more parking spaces elsewhere on site. And we kind of get the best of both worlds. As, as, you know, as you know, we don't like to try and design from the deus or kind of go on the fly. But that's just my thoughts sitting here at the meeting. I mean, if you're thinking about a condition, I certainly would encourage you to ask the applicant. Um, I mean, if you're thinking about a condition, I certainly would encourage you to ask the applicant and his design team if, uh, they think that that's feasible.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, we'll keep that under consideration for now, and then I'll go back to, I think, Commissioner Roman. You have your hand up?
Uh, Commissioner Cookedon still had his hand up. I don't know if he had more thoughts.
Commissioner?
I'm, Mr. Chair, may I add just one last thing? This is Nick Johnson here with the staff. I just did get a jabber from, uh, Brian Hanson that the traffic and engineering staff are supportive of, uh, your idea of providing a second drop off. So just wanted to
Okay.
uh, offer their thoughts as well.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Sorry for my interruption.
Commissioner Cookedon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the north site is not currently applying for a concurrent use parking agreement. So if we were to remove the proof of parking at the south site, could that, could the applicant have, or in the future apply for a concurrent use agreement, and then those stalls, uh, that are no longer necessary in the north site be the uh, proof of parking for the south side?
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Chair, uh, Commissioner Cock, uh, Cookedon, excuse me, that, that is a, a possibility. Uh, as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, we do have some facilities that operate, uh, with non-concurrent use conditions. Um, so theoretically, if they were using, if they had a nighttime evening event, um, in the multipurpose space, say, say you had parent teacher conferences or a science fair, um, then theoretically you could impose conditions as part of your conditional use permit, um, that the other, that say the south building or other portions of the school uh, could not also generate additional parking demand or, uh, operate at full scale. That would reduce the required parking, um, as we've done on other developments and sites in Bloomington, so it would remove that, that need. But as I stated, they're meeting the full requirement, so no, at this point, no concurrent condition was contemplated or discussed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Again, helpful to understand, uh, the perspective of the ordinance. Uh, Commissioner Cookedon, did you have more on that?
That's all.
Okay. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I kind of, I think my train of thought has shifted, you know, I s- I, I still support the idea of, of a drop off, and I heard Mr. Johnson talking about, you know, proof of parking. I think, yeah, once you create a drop off, then you lose the ability to use that as proof of parking. But then this also goes back to, which we are not going to solve today. Uh, or I'm not gonna, you know, we, we can't. But we've had repeated conversations in my time on the commission in, you know, almost four years about our, our parking standards and, and whether or not those are, um, we, we overpark for twenty twenty-two versus nineteen seventy-two. And so this is just another good reminder that it may be time for us to take a look at that uh, as a body, uh, with staff giving us some advice and guidance on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Roman. Yeah, I, I would tend to agree with you here. I, I, just looking at the facility, and I get there may be events. Um, and it's not for us to solve every detail of it, but I think what I, from where I'm sitting, I think there's some options, especially considering what's required for parking and what they're providing, um, and the fact that, at least for that south building, there are three different opportunities, um, to which a drop off could occur. Again, a lot of that has to do with how quickly the facility develops, how many kids it has, um, how many are actually riding the bus, and so I'm kind of stuck with this side of, I would like to say that there, the condition should be that, uh, something to the matter of the, the south building should have a, um, school bus drop off, um, that doesn't require kids, uh, middle schoolers to cross the parking lot. There's different ways to do that, I think. Um, I don't know, but we're not gonna solve it, as you said, I think, Commissioner Roman. So, um, I don't know, Mr. Johnson, though, how much that would screw up other conditions, uh, that we have right now, if that conflicts with other conditions.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Markagard.
Insert a couple of comments. Just been corresponding with, uh, Mr. Pease, who's brought up some precedent that we have at several other schools in Bloomington, uh, which is, we do have areas that are shared kind of between parking and drop off. In other words, at certain times of the day, they're used for drop off, but then at other times when there's peak demand, they can be used as parking. So I think that could very well be done on the south side.
Excellent.
It might be reconfigured a bit, but, and rather than serving as proof of parking, it could potentially be built out as a drop off area. And then striped such that when it's not used as drop off and there's peak parking demand, then it, then it's used for parking. So I th- I think a condition like that could work.
So, uh, shared parking and drop off, I think, is?
Yeah, but I think we would want to get the applicant's, uh, thoughts on that and give them a chance to, to weigh in on a condition.
Yeah, and again, I don't, uh, we don't want to design it. We just want to say what the requirement is, and so, um, commission members, if you're all right, uh, I would ask, um, the applicant in this particular case, if Mr. Griffith or Mr. Anderson can answer that question directly, um, if that's something, uh, that they could, um, if that's something that they
Yes, but?
Achieve within the site?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna let Mr. Anderson address the particulars of the site, but I will say that when we looked at and modeled the parking, the, the key demand or the highest demand would be those, you know, kind of parent teacher nights and, and community nights. Um, and, and those nights would not have, uh, bus drop off. Those typically would be, you know, automobiles and, you know, families coming to the site. And so really that, that I think as Mr. Markagard pointed out, and for Mr. Pease, the idea that that could be shared parking drop off, I, I think functions nicely. So I just wanted to, to start our, our response with my understanding, and the team can back me on this, is that the peak parking would really occur on those community nights and, and not during the school day when there's drop off occurring. So, uh, Mr. Anderson, if you can uh, address the technicality of whether that south side could provide for drop off?
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Um, yes, we are comfortable with that condition. Ultimately, it's, um, in the school's benefit and something that we would be doing on our own regardless. Uh, so with the ability to slide the proof of parking stalls around the site in some of the unused areas, uh, is the easiest way to go about it, and certainly is, um, it was brought up as a precedent that we can look at using, uh, a shared area for both drop off and um, parking during off hours would be even more preferable, um, which leads me to believe that, yes, we are comfortable with the condition uh, without, and we can keep the proof of parking. Um, the proof of parking location might change, but we'll proof of park it the same as, uh, same value that we're proposing. Um, so I guess we would ask that it be a condition that a drop off is added to the south building site, um, and that we maintain a, a proof of parking to be code compliant with parking. Um, but i- that we get to, uh, work with staff and, and internally amongst ourselves to develop that, uh, in, in order to keep this moving and have this, uh, project open, um, intact to the school year. But yeah, we are comfortable that we can achieve that.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. And, uh, Mr. Griffith, appreciate the, uh, response to our question. With that, I'll go back to, uh, commission members. Um, hearing, uh, the applicant's response that they are favorable to that condition, um, is there further discussion? If not, um, I would entertain a motion, uh, on this item with, uh, the, uh, proposed additional condition.
Chair Silverg.
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
This is Nick Johnson. Just to, uh, offer an idea, um, should, should the planning commission look to add a, a condition of approval pertaining to a dedicated student drop off at the south building? It might work nicely just to amend existing condition, uh, number four, which pertains to access, circulation, and parking plans being approved by the city engineer. If you wanted to amend that condition, you could add a statement, uh, following, uh, the existing language that a dedicated student, uh, pickup and drop off area be provided. That would be my suggestion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So I hope others are writing this down too, but it is a, uh, understood y- you are comfortable with amending, uh, condition number four to add in with a dedicated student drop off and pickup area for the south building. Um, and I think the rest of it is, is entwined in the, uh, access, circulation, and parking must be approved by the city engineer. So, um, we don't need to get, again, into the specifics on it, knowing that, uh, staff are fully aware of, of the wishes of, of the planning commission on this. All right, uh, commission members, any further discussion? Otherwise, again, I would entertain a motion. Uh, I'd entertain a motion either way. Commissioner Roman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Mr. Johnson, if you have some language for me, thank you. Uh, in case PL two zero two two dash one zero, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend approval of a conditional use permit for a pre-kindergarten through middle school campus located at one zero six four zero and one zero seven zero zero Lindale Avenue South, subject to the conditions and code requirement attached to the staff report, amending condition number four to require the provision of, uh, student drop off and pickup at the south building, uh, similar to what's provided at the north building, uh, subject to staff review and approval of, uh, that provision.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Roman. All right, uh, commission members, we have a motion in front of us to approve uh, with amended condition number four. Is there a second? Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
All right. Commission members, we have a motion and a second in front of us to approve, uh, to uh, move, recommend, uh, recommended approval of a conditional use permit for a pre-kindergarten through middle school campus located at one oh six four zero and one oh seven zero zero Lindale Avenue South, subject to the conditions and code requirements that staff, attached to the staff report, amending condition four with a dedicated student pickup and drop off for the south area building. Um, and with that, is there any further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor, say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman? Sorry, I, she's abstaining. Commissioner Roman?
Obstinate.
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookedon?
Aye.
An aye for myself. Motion passes. Moving on to, uh, the second recommendation or motion? Uh, do I have a motion? Anybody that would like to do that? There we go. Commissioner Cookedon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, question for staff, do we also need to amend, um, condition number four in this motion, or is that covered under the first one?
Yeah, Chair Silverg. Uh, Commissioner Cookedon, I would amend the condition in the final site and building plans as well.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Cookedon?
Very well. Mr. Chair, in case PL two zero two two dash one zero, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend approval of final site and building plans for site improvements associated with a pre-kindergarten through middle school campus located at one zero six four zero and one zero seven zero zero Lindale Avenue South, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report, amending condition number four, um, to dedicate a bus drop off and pickup area at the south site at one zero six four zero.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Cookedon. All right, commission members, we have a motion in front of us to approve with a, um, modified condition four. Is there a second? Commissioner Abdi?
Second.
All right, commission members, we have a motion and a second in front of us to recommend approval of a final site and building plan for site improvements associated with a pre-kindergarten through middle school campus located at one oh six four zero and one oh seven zero zero Lindale Avenue South, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report with an amended condition number four, allowing a dedicated student pickup and drop off for the south, south building of the campus. All right, any further discussion on that? Not seeing any. All those in favor, say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookedon?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Motion passes. All right, uh, this item will now move forward to the city council on February twenty-eighth on the consent agenda. Again, this item will move forward on the consent agenda at the si- twenty-eighth, uh, February twenty-eighth city council meeting. All right, uh, moving on to item number two, which is a study item. Uh, Mr. James, you have a discussion on hotel and office conversions for us?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Uh, let me pull up the slides here. Yeah, so this is a, a study item tonight on, uh, hotel office conversions. And, you know, it's easy to, uh, kind of get in the weeds with some of this stuff, but the big question tonight, just to keep in mind, is, you know, should we encourage, um, stay neutral or discourage, uh, conversions to residential? Um, you know, with the pandemic, we saw hotels and offices experience really low occupancies. Some, um, have considered converting to multifamily residential, since that market is so strong. Um, you know, Crown Plaza is one example and is moving forward with their, uh, partial conversion of the hotel. And so staff would just like to receive, um, direction moving forward, you know, if we're approached with future inquiries, um, how to handle those, you know, what, um, what standards are barriers and what type of, like, code flexibility might be entertained, so. Um, but really, at the end of the day, this is the big question here to keep in mind. So why do we care about conversions? Um, now there's benefits, of course. We want, we don't want to see empty buildings. Uh, want to see them, um, efficiently used. Uh, and of course, to increase the housing supply wherever possible. Um, also hotels typically have smaller, um, dwelling units, so those can be more affordable. It's easier to um, convert those, some of those spaces. Hotels are already configured for living in some ways, in many ways. Um, and then, of course, you know, retrofitting, uh, an existing building instead of redeveloping reduces waste to landfills also. So there's a sustainability, uh, side to it as well. So there are concerns too, um, you know, there's potential for reduced revenue. Hotels do contribute a, a fair amount to the general fund. Um, however, uh, you know, if it's an underperforming hotel that converts to, uh, really well-performing residential, then, you know, that could result in increased revenue too. So it, some of it's tough to generalize, um. Those concerns about the quality too of housing supply, you know, if it's an older, um, structure, but has, um, you know, more of that outdated, uh, systems, or is it, is it a, is it a building we really want to see retrofitted, or would we prefer that it be, um, redeveloped entirely? Um, and then also some of the, uh, hotels and buildings in general are, um, maybe less likely to have space to be able to provide some amenities, um, that other residential sites provide. So just thinking, like, common areas, um, there's laundry rooms or storage space. Um, you know, some hotels, especially like the limited service hotels, just don't have those, um, flex spaces to make use of. Um, you know, you would think ho- extended stay hotels would be prime candidates for conversion, just given, you know, a lot of the units have kitchens already and larger, um, living areas. But, um, we haven't seen, I haven't seen as much of that in the research. Uh, I haven't seen those conversions elsewhere because they aren't, um, really struggling with occupancy as much as other types of hotels. Um, another side note here, uh, you know, I spoke with a few developers and one brought up the energy standards, you know, and trying to retrofit buildings to meet energy standards, you know, sometimes with older buildings, it's, um, can be tough to meet those. it's can be tough to meet those standards with regards to like if it has that insulation or if all the windows need to be replaced. So yeah, there's a few factors that come into play here, but you know, for the most part, developers are interested in, you know, really improving a lot of those flex spaces because that's where some of the profit comes from also when they're able to provide those extras as part of the residential site. So a little bit of background, just on the market here, so looking at the bars in the dark blue, we definitely saw a drop in occupancy with the pandemic back in March, April, 2020. The green line is 2021. And so occupancy has started to improve. This is for the whole metro area, but we're still not quite at pre-pandemic occupancy rates yet. The tourism industry is starting to return, but you know, the business travel is still low. And it kind of remains unknown, you know, will that pick up to what it was pre-pandemic? It's not quite known yet with all of the work from home. Now, even office occupancy, what does work from home mean for that? It's not entirely known yet. I have seen some reports that predict, you know, pre-pandemic occupancy rates returned by, you know, later this year or next year. But, you know, a lot of variables still. So another piece of the puzzle is the structural feasibility. You know, of course, hotels, you can imagine, are easier to convert. Offices would require a lot more remodeling, especially those like concrete structures. They don't have the utilities already. You know, that said, conversion isn't impossible. It does happen. But it largely depends on the site. You know, there has to be strong demand for a new kind of use there at that site. So, you know, denser office areas, commercial areas might be more attractive for some of those office conversions. So, you know, this project, I focused primarily on hotels because it's a little bit more feasible. Maybe a little more realistic that they would convert in Bloomington. I mean, we've seen one already. It also helps to kind of focus our discussion for tonight. But I can imagine that another conversation and direction received could also apply to offices too. So looking at hotels then in the city here, there's they're mapped here with the pink dots. And I mentioned some of the considerations, you know, what what comes into play when thinking about whether to convert. There's the market aspect, you know, how easy the structure is to convert. There's the site, if it if it's near amenities, if it's suitable for residential. And then there's the zoning. So that's kind of what I'll focus in on next here. And I guess one takeaway is, you know, even if zoning becomes more flexible, it's not, you know, guaranteed that we'll see a ton of conversions, just given all these other factors. So, you know, a lot of our hotels are already in a zoning district that allows residential. Not full conversion, but you know, a fair amount of residential still on that site. And so the real barrier in in zoning anyway to converting a hotel or office or or multi-family standards listed here, won't go into a ton of detail, but you know, enclosed parking, we require one enclosed space for each unit. And, you know, frankly, a lot of our hotels don't have, either they don't have enclosed parking or they don't have nearly enough to come anywhere near meeting our standard. Same with number of spaces, the hotel requirement is lower. And, you know, the our conversion, there's just not space to add parking spaces anywhere. Now, storage and unit size, can imagine that space developer might want to, you know, if they have to use storage space, they might prefer otherwise to add more units or use some of that as flex space instead. And then impervious surface, some of our hotels are allowed to grow up to ninety percent max impervious, whereas residential uses, the max is eighty five percent. So there's not a ton that are at ninety percent, but if they were to convert, they might conflict with that standard. So there's a kind of a couple of different considerations that we'll look first at. You know, hotels where the zoning allows residential. Again, there's quite a few here pictured. There are, I think, thirty four total. And so really what happens is, you know, if they can't meet those standards I just talked about, there's a couple of ways to achieve flexibility in the code, either through the opportunity housing ordinance or through plan development, the overlay zoning districts. So the opportunity housing ordinance, you know, that's a requirement to provide affordable units. And so so much flexibility is granted as part of that. And then more flexibility is given if there's greater affordability with the project. But, you know, with what we've seen with Crown Plaza and a few others, you know, not all projects can achieve the greatest amount of flexibility or affordability to achieve the max flexibility. So instead, you know, they rely on OHO plus plan development flexibility when it applies. But that PD flexibility, you know, it adds time and uncertainty. It's might mean rezoning. You know, it scares, it scares a lot of developers away. It's not a preferred process. So, you know, the the options then kind of come down to, well, do we want to change multifamily standards to make conversions easier or or look at the OHO standards, you know, make it easier in there to convert to residential? And some other things to weigh and think about are, you know, if we make amendments to multifamily standards, making conversions easier, now that might detract from potential affordability that could be gained through the OHO. I can get more into more details with the OHO, but you know, for now, it's the OHO offers a lot of flexibility. So it just can't always be achieved with the affordability that's needed. We can also look at amendments to the OHO, you know, the OHO incentivizes those higher rates of affordability. And yet, depending on how it's done, it might, it could diminish the potential for greater affordability, but have to take a little closer look at the standards. So then thinking again about the bigger picture question, do we encourage or remain neutral, discourage? You know, encourage conversions would be more of what I was talking about with code amendments, you know? Maybe there, maybe it's a new pathway to flexibility in the OHO or there's another way to achieve more flexibility with some of the standards. Another thing I do want to make note of is we have single room occupancy standards on the work plan. You might be familiar about single room occupancies where tenants have their own bedrooms, but might share common areas like kitchens and living rooms and such with other tenants. So those sort of standards would make it easier to convert hotels also. And it's a separate project on the work plan. So remain neutral. That approach should be doing similar to what we do now. You know, no code amendments and keep looking at PD flexibility. If we want to discourage conversions, then we look to discourage any flexibility through that plan development. The other thing to consider here is where the zoning prohibits residential. So there's only a few of these hotels, you know, quite a few of them are in this airport runway overlay district. So that prohibits residential anyway. There is one little outlier off of thirty five, and that's the Holiday Inn. Kind of embedded in an industrial area there, is zoned industrial now and tried in commercial. But staff doesn't think it's the best fit for rezoning. And then there's a handful of hotels up along four ninety four that are all zoned CS one. So they do not allow residential. So, you know, the direction we're kind of looking to receive is if if any of these, you know, were approached and were asked about rezoning, you know, what what criteria do we want to look at in order to consider rezoning? Or should we not consider rezoning at all? Are there certain criteria that are nice to have or others that are must have? We started brainstorming with staff and came up with this list, but it's, you know, very early and we're open to suggestions. Are any of the nice to haves, should they be in the other column or vice versa? Are there other other criteria we haven't thought about, or maybe some of these should be removed? We're open to suggestions, you know, and I can, I can answer questions on them later if there are any. But yeah, again, the the kind of bigger topic here is, you know, what approach do we want to take on conversions? And I think that guides the other questions, you know? Are there code amendments that we want to see? And do we want to develop some of the criteria on which to consider rezonings to residential? So with that, I'm happy to answer questions, I guess, real quick here. This is the first study meeting and next week I'll go to HRA and then April I'll go to court and city council of study meetings also.
All right. Thank you, Mr. James. Appreciate the review for us here tonight. And so looking for some feedback. So I don't know, commissioners, thoughts? And I'm wondering, Mr. James, if you can bring up first that that if in a residential area slide, I don't, it was like four or five slides back.
Yep. Give me a minute.
Sometimes helpful to to see some slides as we just, yeah, I think it might have been that one with the three. Next one forward.
Okay.
Yeah, just kind of some some thoughts there on maybe on the residential side. Just this kind of general question of discourage, remain neutral, or encourage, I think is is helpful. So Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I kind of listen to this and then also reading about this, I'm reminded of two presentations that we've heard recently, fairly recently. One being that we are not necessarily very close or making headway in meeting the needs of thirty percent AMI units in Bloomington, but also our region. So that's one thing. The second thing that comes to mind is a presentation that we had where we saw the flexibility in structural parking that could be converted to retail, housing, office, et cetera. So when I'm thinking about both of those things congruently, I and I don't know if I'd use the term encourage, because I think there has to be some sort of party who comes to the table who has the tools and wants to go through the process of, you know, converting a hotel or an office to residential. But I do think that this is a different lane or requires a different lane of flexibility. So when I saw the OHO creating a lane of flexibility for conversions, I think that really, that makes a lot of sense. But then I'd also kind of back up one or two steps to think about how, because we're still, I wouldn't say we're building a lot of hotels, but we're still, there's still hotels being built. I wouldn't say necessarily in Bloomington. There are hotels being built downtown Minneapolis. And what i- is there something that we should be thinking about when we do that? So that not necessarily it's a quick conversion, but if we're doing this for structured parking, is there any sort of something that we can do for, maybe not office, but potentially hotels? To think about the future use of whatever that is, because I think as a community, we will be far and ahead of other places and and drive sort of market interest in Bloomington if we have the ability, I would say, to actually do a conversion. I mean, obviously, we do because we're, there is one happening. But I wouldn't say that that would be a very, that example is not a very easy conversion. I think there are a lot of hurdles to that one. So and then one more thing about the thirty percent AMI. I think the SROs really hit the nail on the head with meeting that goal of thirty percent AMI. So or is one tool to get us closer to thirty percent AMI. So I I lean towards, I don't know if I'd use the word encourage, but I would lean towards discussing ways in which the feasibility would be increased in Bloomington.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Albrecht. That's, I like where you're going with that. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I think what Commissioner Albrecht commented on is is spot on. One thing that I just wanted to wrap my head around, can we go to the map of the hotels that are in scope? Mind, Mr. James? Okay, so this is where the zoning allows. However, in the in the next map, you had crossed out a few locations. So what I'm trying to understand is what is, what is the scope or what locations are really allowed? And, you know, I get down to some of these discussions that we've had as a commission before of, we allow it, but it's effectively prohibited because of these, you know, restrictions and zoning and airport runway districts. So is there a map or a way that we can just say, okay, here are the locations that we're talking about today? And how, what is the scope of of this potential opportunity? And and I think what Commissioner Albrecht mentioned too is, do we really need to even say hotels? Do we say other types of structures like offices, parking structure? You know, we just talked about a school. What about a school that wants to become housing? You know, all of these other types of buildings, even industrial type buildings, you know, making them into into housing. We're just only looking at hotels to keep scope, but maybe from a sustainability play, from a housing play, we need to open our scope to all types of buildings that could potentially be housings.
All right. Is that it, Commissioner Goldsman? Want to make sure. Okay. All right. Anybody else with thoughts? You know, I think and maybe I'll step in here before Commissioner Corman, and then I think Commissioner Roman will be on. But I I I'm not sure that we're neutral. I'm not sure that we're encouraged. We're somewhere in that in between and thinking about how to move something forward. Actually, what you said, Commissioner Goldsman, certainly, I think there's probably maybe more pressure people are thinking about hotels. But this idea of schools, when you mentioned that, reminded me of my hometown, where the school has been converted into housing and a grocery store and a and a post office. And so what are the things that allow that? And of course, small little town, less than a hundred people, and they figured out how to do mixed use twenty five years ago. But one area that I, when I think about the encourage is is being careful to protect that opportunity, housing ordinance and what we're doing. And that doesn't mean that, and I think there was some discussion here about keeping it, talking about these other multifamily developments having the same standard. I'm not sure that I would say that is necessary because of the unique nature of converting some other use to housing and allowing. So there might be an allowing affordable units. So it might be different elements of the opportunity housing ordinance that would come into play. Certainly, I think I'm also a little bit cautious about the hotel industry brings a lot of tax dollars to the Certainly, I think I'm also a little bit cautious about the hotel industry brings a lot of tax dollars to the city. I don't want to go so far as to, uh, preclude it, um, that, that, uh, from coming back in the city. But I think being flexible to allow something when it makes sense for the developer does make sense. So I'll go to Commissioner Corman next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just have a couple of, couple of questions. Um, so ma- maybe I missed this part, but, um, so if you can't just kind of bring it up again if I did. But, um, if we're, if we were going to, or if the city was going to talk about encourage, would there be a temporary status for that? Is this, uh, something that, you know, once you get, it stays, it remains? Or would this have like a temporary condition just based on, uh, current needs? And then the other one is, um, do you have, um, the staff have any like, um, type of information, um, any previous studies that have been done, um, in other cities? You know, perhaps, um, not necessarily in Minnesota, but perhaps, um, other cities in, in similar situations or similar, under similar conditions that Bloomington is, some, some city that it's, uh, um, similar to Bloomington where this has been, um, where this has happened before. And what kind of implication did this bring to the city? And, um, yeah, I'm just kind of curious to know if there's anything out there, um, any type of study done that, uh, would allow us to kind of compare and see or see the potential, um, impact that it would, it could have in the city.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Corman. So your first question about, um, like temporary standards. I guess what we've talked about staff is more, I guess, permanent standards. Uh, keeping in mind that, you know, we perform code amendments all the time. So, uh, some of these standards are always changing. I, I guess in many ways they're all kind of temporary. And I don't know if I'm answering your question well enough, so feel free to let me know. But we've talked more permanently about standards if, if we were to go that route. And as far as like what's happened elsewhere throughout the country or in state, there, there are a handful of conversions, quite a few actually. And rezoning can be a big barrier to them as well as parking requirements. So no cities that have seen more conversions, um, have been more flexible around, around both of those aspects. I know a- as far as like code amendments elsewhere, um, I don't know if I've seen as many um, kind of along the lines of what we're talking about, I've seen more code amendments that would make it easier for hotels to convert, um, using the single room occupancy standards. So a little bit more direct, like one-to-one conversion of a hotel. And I, I've seen those more on, on the coasts. I think New York and California have, um, ordinances in place to make it easier to, um, convert hotels and, and sometimes even as more like temporary living areas too. So, um, I guess that's what I've seen elsewhere. Did I answer your question well enough?
Okay. All right. Go to Commissioner Roman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this is good work, uh, series of thoughts which may or may not be linear. That's what a study session is for. I agree with Commissioner Albrecht's comment that, I don't know if it's so much as encourage as maybe remove barriers. So, you know, I don't know that we are out saying, you know, everyone who wants to come on down, but maybe let's think about how do we remove barriers? Because what I struggle with, um, and I've struggled with this before in meetings where we've talked about this is I, I, I don't like the idea of applying a P D to a project just to avoid requirements. And I feel like that sometimes is considered or, or suggested that again, and from my perspective, it's, it's, you know, I don't, I don't want, I don't like having situations where it's, I, I just think a planned development should be bigger than a one-off conversion kind of a thing. So the, the remain neutral P D flexibility, that one doesn't quite feel right to me. As far as, you know, rezoning allows residential, I think it's fine. You know, I mean, we, that's clearly we don't, we can, you know, change whatever tweaks we need to do to make it, you know, so it's not harder to do that. As far as the areas where it, we, we don't allow residential, I think that's a, that's a mixed kind of a thing. So I think clearly industrial, I would say no, because we've stated a priority as the city to protect our industrial. So anything that, that converts industrial away from that, it would be a no for me. At the same time, you've got other areas in here, um, especially at, you know, four ninety-four and Normandale where, um, you know, we've been actively rezoning parts of that area away from office use. And that, that goes to where there was conversation about other uses. I think it was Commissioner Goldsman mentioned about, um, things that aren't hotels. And so, um, in, in that area over there is probably a good example of an area that, you know, um, actually I'm looking at France, so I'm in the wrong area. Um, we don't have hotels on the south side of Normandale. But anyways, again, it's, it's, you know, these are areas, whether it's here on the south side of four ninety-four or in the residential area map, where they again are pretty much along the American Boulevard corridor. Those are areas that we, we believe that someday will have some level of reliable transit. Uh, and if we are truly trying to figure out how do we solve the problem of affordable housing? Well, typically folks who have a need, especially at the thirty, at the thirty percent level, um, are often more transit dependent. Uh, and so if we can, if this is available along those corridors, I think that makes sense. I don't, um, well, yeah, hotels are not going anywhere anytime soon. And I know we have some that have been approved, but not yet built. So, um, generally I think we're heading in the right direction here, I guess. And I, I would say not necessarily encourage, but remove barriers.
Thank you, Commissioner Roman. Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I also have a variety of thoughts. The first one I want to talk about is sustainability. On the surface, it looks more sustainable to keep an existing building rather than to demolish and replace. But I do want to say that you are not getting full value of that because an old building has inefficient mechanical systems and electrical and all the things. There's kind of this balance between operational energy and embodied, what we would call embodied carbon or embodied energy. And so it's not a full value savings when you keep an old building because they're drafty and they're inefficient and they, and all of the things. And I don't know how that breaks down or what the return on investments, you know, sustainability wise is. I'm sure there's plenty of studies on it, but it's not, not so sustainable to keep an old building around. So that, that's one thing to consider. Other things. Uh, one thing that, uh, a couple of things that hit me when I read through the staff report, the first was, attention, the potential, um, to reduce the value of the O H O by allowing for a different set of standards with conversions. Uh, that does make me uncomfortable. I'm, I'm sort of with staff on that one. Uh, we don't, you know, the O H O is a great tool that provides a lot of flexibility and, um, I, I like it. And I, I think we should sort of stick to it. And so I, I, I do have concerns about creating a second set of standards would reduce the value of the O H O. And along those lines, um, enacting, you know, a different set of standards for conversion, you know, I think you're not getting the same end product. You know, if we, if we create a difference in standards where we reduce the parking requirement or the storage requirements or the other things, you know, we're, we're just, we're not getting the same final product. And it's a little bit of a balance, right? Because it's better than nothing. So you've provided the flexibility to do something which is better than nothing. But I, I don't think I'm in the camp that I like two different sets of standards. I think all residential applications, if we're doing the affordability piece, should have the same outcomes. I think that's just where I'm the most comfortable. So I would say I'm more squarely in the neutral camp than, uh, you know, I certainly am not in the discouraged camp, you know, I'm fine with this. It's a little scary when you first think about it, but I think I can get there if it's done well. But I think I'm more in line with the neutral camp that we keep things the way they are. We have tools on the books that allow for flexibility and, and I, I would advocate that we either stick with those tools or we allow all residential developments to use a revised set of tools if that's the way we're going to go.
Thank you, Commissioner Cookton. Um, Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to respond to Commissioner Cook. I think his, um, assessment of, you know, sustainability and, and that, that's, that's a very good point. I however disagree about the opportunity housing ordinance. And the reason why is because the way in which, my understanding at least, apartments can be financed and built, um, they are so expensive and demand a certain level of rent. Um, and so we, when we build something, we have to charge X number of dollars of rent. Um, and so therefore you're eliminating the possibility of even getting down to that thirty percent, even sixty percent or eighty percent without subsidizing with market rate units. So I think I understand where you're coming from, but the new construction, the way in which that new construction is built, I would say hinders, at least for right now, with the cost of construction, labor shortages, all of that happening right now, hinders our ability to inc- further encourage that thirty percent. So if the goal is, the end goal is at thirty percent and through potentially single room occupancy, hotel conversions, um, they may not be meeting higher level sustainability goals. I agree with that. But I do believe that there is some other model other than your one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom apartment complex with market rate rents with nine percent. I mean, I would encourage, I guess, the staff to think about the opportunity housing ordinance as when you think about the conversions, maybe even requiring more than nine percent. I mean, nine percent is low. It's only a handful of units each time, but if you could convert a whole hotel to, uh, you know, be, I'm, I'm thinking of like, uh, developers like Dominion where entire projects meet that certain A M I criteria. That's just a thought.
Thank you, Commissioner Albrecht. Uh, looks like Commissioner Roman, you get your hand back up.
Yeah, it was the other piece I forgot in my wandering, meandering. And that, you know, that's a little bit of, it's a combination of what we've been talking about with our colleagues over on the H R A about thinking differently about our housing standards. Um, but then also, you know, we did have the project, you know, what is the Crown Plaza where we, we, we went smaller than typical. And I'd be curious to see, I mean, I think that project probably isn't complete yet, I'm guessing. Um, but it'd be interesting to see how that, um, how that fills, how that sells rents, I guess, however they're doing it. Um, because I think that would be a good barometer for what is the market interested in. Uh, you know, we, as we've said, you know, we've, we've expressed interest in this body that, you know, we are open to, uh, standards in our housing that are less than the typical, you know, ten forty, two-car garage kind of a thing. And so, um, in keeping with that, I think, I don't have a problem with the smaller footprint that a hotel would potentially lead to. But I think again, the question is how do we leave open the opportunity without creating a glut of something that turns out maybe not to have been the right thing?
Thank you, Commissioner Roman. Yeah, it, you know, and maybe in line with an earlier comment you had about removing barriers. You know, one of the comments in here was, you know, maybe some of the discrepancy in parking. And I think if, looking at that map, um, you know, that, the map is aligned along American Boulevard and, and, uh, over some of it that's, that's out of, uh, I guess, thought process because of the airport. But, you know, we, it wasn't that long ago, we put a letter forward to the Met Council to allow the American Boulevard B R T to continue to be in our regional plan. And I think, um, thinking about that and what that means, and, and while it may be a way off, uh, I think that's the other way we plan is, is, um, maybe not having those same parking, uh, requirements for these sorts of, uh, transitional, um, developments. It, 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 you know, the, again, you have to build some ridership to get that kind of premium transit as well. And, and certainly, um, I think American Boulevard is ripe for that. So, um, that's a piece I think that can help remove a barrier. Um, I think we already have some flexibility clearly, as you said, Commissioner Roman, we did Crown Plaza. Let's see where that starts to lead. I think there are other opportunities and maybe this is, uh, what Commissioner Albrecht was saying, um, right there. Think differently about it, the opportunity housing ordinance and what that means. Is it only nine percent when it's, uh, four hundred or three hundred square foot housing, uh, apartments or single occupancy rooms? How does that work? I think there's a little more work to do on it, but I think that leads us to that between neutral and encourage. There's, it, we have to think about it differently. You can't require all the same things and expect somebody to charge, uh, seventy percent less or whatever the number is. So, um, I'll leave it at that. I can see Commissioner Cookton's really thinking here, so.
Yeah, I am deep in thought, Mr. Chair. And the reason I'm in such deep thought is I, I hear Commissioner Albrecht's, um, thoughts and she's right. Uh, we're not seeing the very low, or I should say very affordable units at thirty percent A M I. We're not seeing it. We've seen almost none of it since the O H O was started. And so how do you, how do you get that? And, um, my, one of my concerns with, with hotel conversions and achieving the thirty percent A M I is that, you know, the, the hotels that are going to convert are the ones that are in the worst financial shape, right there. I'm generalizing a bit here, but there are least desirable hotels, right? They're, it's, it's not the nice ones. It's the ones that are in pretty rough shape and, uh, aren't doing well. And so I think about the Days Inn, which we just condemned and are now gonna, it's now, I think, already gone or going to be gone. I, I, I don't think in retrospect, I would have wanted that to be converted. I think, um, I think we've, we've got a better outcome by tearing that down and having new developments. So how do you get both, right? How do you get, how do you not keep tired structural stock around, right? Like we want to be modern, we want to update our city, we want to take away the worst and, and build new and get deeply affordable housing. I'm in such deep thought because I'm trying to figure out how do you get both? And I, I don't have an answer for it and I wish I did because I appreciate that allowing the conversion of our oldest, most tired hotels, um, into housing would create the affordability we want. But I still have concerns that we're not creating like a, a, a final product that's really desirable even for the occupants. You know, they're going to have drafty windows and it's maybe not in the best location. And it's loud because the windows aren't, you know, they're old. And so how do you get both? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
All right. Other commissioners? Thoughts? Well, maybe, or maybe I'll do this, uh, Mr. James, any other areas that we maybe haven't covered that you would like to hear some thoughts on?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. This has been really good discussion for me. You know, we've had a lot of discussion on this point. And so this has been helpful. I'm getting the sense we're somewhere between neutral and courage. And I've heard removed barriers. And, um, you know, thinking differently about the O H O and that, how that works. But I'm, you know, getting the sense that it's, it's worthwhile to look more at, um, you know, this in-between and, and some of, get more into the, um, details of our O H O, um, remove, thinking about conversions. You know, on the discussion about hotels that are already zoned to prohibit residential, um, there is um, there's, there are comments, maybe more on, you know, certain areas of the city that we might be open to rezoning. And so I guess I'm maybe hearing that is more geographically based than maybe some of these criteria. Are there, do we like these criteria or is it more about, you know, certain locations in the city?
Like for me, I would just say non-industrial. The other areas I'm less concerned about.
Yeah, there, I think about that a little bit and, um, we wanna protect our industrial areas. But I think about if it's already not acting in industrial capacity, is it ideal to provide housing that can potentially, uh, be walkable to jobs? Um, I, uh, uh, we might need a little more work on this one, I'm thinking, uh, from my standpoint, because there, there could be benefits. And I think, again, it goes back to, uh, if we are targeting, um, a certain level of affordability, for instance. Um, and the industrial jobs around it are maybe not, maybe they're at a much higher level or, or if we're market rate and the jobs near it are, um, you know, uh, at, at, at a lower level pay. Maybe that's part of it. I don't know if we can do some analysis around that. Maybe that would help shed some light on it for me. Um, it, I, I think when we start to get into industrial and we talk about family, uh, two, three-bedroom type facilities, that might be a different driver as well. Um, not having maybe some of the recreational, uh, activities close or, uh, noise and, and different types of pollution that might be associated with different industrial areas that we have.
Um, one more question on that line then. What about, um, near freeways, you know, keeping in mind noise and pollution there as well? Granted, you know, a lot of these hotels are right along a freeway.
I don't know on that one. Uh, Commissioner Goldsman, I see you have a hand up. You can answer.
Uh, I, it, I have actually kind of a comment on a different topic. So maybe I'll take a step back and, and then let others talk about freeways.
Okay. Commissioner Albrecht?
Uh, that one is very tricky. And I think the pedal back to Commissioner Cookton's, if we're, if the goal is to build or have more thirty percent AMI units or more affordability within Bloomington, the question then becomes, is there actual demand for units that are that close to the freeway? I don't know. I don't know what the answer to that is. But I, me personally, I mean, I, I live in a half acre so plus. So I, it's not my jam, but that might be someone, like someone might wanna live super close to the freeway on and off. I don't, I don't know. I think there are some, obviously some high-rise, I wouldn't say high-rise, probably five over one buildings who are, that are close to four ninety-four that already exist. Um, I just wonder if they're, how big of a market it is.
Mm-hmm. Um, Commissioner Goldsman, do you wanna go? Yeah?
Yeah, you know, um, thanks, Mr. Chair. I, I think actually as Commissioner Albrecht was talking, we did just approve an office building conversion. Granted, it'll, it's a tear-down rebuild, um, last meeting, um, right off of I thirty-five. Um, and, uh, we did approve that and, and it was something we discussed about traffic and a little bit of a noise. But if it's okay for a new building, um, and they're meeting, uh, you know, those standards, why wouldn't we approve it for any other type of building?
Okay.
The proverbial question.
Yep. Commissioner Roman?
Yeah, I think oftentimes these types of properties in their hotel form, uh, don't have operable windows anyways. So, um, the noise and the pollution may be less of an issue. Um, back on the industrial question, I think, um, you, Mr. Chair, you made a good point about jobs in those areas. And it's one thing to consider converting the lone hotel in an industrial area. I was also, I was reflecting more on our conversation about broader conversions of other types of large facilities. And I would not support conversion of other types of large facilities in an industrial area. An existing hotel, you know, maybe. Um, but, uh, and then the other thing is, you know, we, we talked a little bit about, you know, how do we increase the, especially at thirty percent? You know, is the nine percent too low, et cetera, et cetera? But we also wanna be careful about balancing, uh, to make sure that our affordable housing is distributed and integrated and not have something become too skewed toward, uh, affordable either. Because, you know, we know data from mistakes we've made over decades in the past of where that has not been successful. Not necessarily in Bloomington, but in America.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Cookton?
Just a note on the freeway thing, Mr. Chair. I wouldn't have any problem living next to a freeway, especially if I was apartment hopping and my number one concern was affordability. Uh, for me personally, I, I could, I could overlook being next to a freeway.
Or next to an airport like yourself.
Well, some of us, uh, look to be next to an airport.
Fair point. All right. Um, Mr. James, what do you think?
Yeah, you know, this has been helpful. I, um, I'm getting the sense that it's, it's, some of it's kind of situational, case by case, depends on the project. You know, you can imagine your freeways, if there's buffers, buffering in place, then maybe it's less of an issue. Uh, and, and it really depends on, you know, level of affordability, um, and, you know, what the project is bringing. So, yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I, I am hearing that there's a, like, it's tough to narrow down. Yes, we'd support based on any one of these criteria or not support.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's okay and that's part of the direction we're hoping for tonight.
Okay. Any, any other follow-up you want from us?
Um, I, I don't think so at this point. Um, yeah, are there any other questions for me?
Not seeing any right now. I guess I, I don't necessarily have any, uh, questions either. Uh, again, any questions for Mr. James?
Nice work.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, this is, this is gonna be a difficult one, I can imagine. So, um, you've done a nice job putting information together so far and I, I can only, uh, expect that that will continue. It would be good to hear this, uh, information, uh, before it comes back as an action for us to as a, another, uh, study item, maybe after you've gone through the, the various boards and councils. Um, just to, to get a sense of where the city, uh, is heading or, uh, at, you know, where the city would, would head with something more formal.
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right. Anything else on that, Mr. James?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. With that, uh, commission members, we'll move on to, uh, item number three, which is minute approval of the January sixth Planning Commission synopsis. And as I read this, uh, the only person, uh, that was not at that meeting was Commissioner Corman. And so, um, I don't know, folks have had a opportunity to review. Um, I would entertain a motion. Uh, Commissioner Roman?
So moved.
All right, uh, commission members, we have a motion to approve the draft Planning Commission synopsis. Is there a second? Commissioner Goldsman?
Second.
All right. Commission members, we have a motion and a second in front of us to approve the draft Planning Commission synopsis of the January sixth, twenty twenty-two meeting as presented. All those, uh, in favor, say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Abstain.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Roman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Obdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
And aye for myself. Motion passes. The minutes are approved. Moving on to item number four, Mr. Markagard, uh, Planning Commission Policy and Issues Updates.
Yes, Mr. Chair, looking ahead at our next three, uh, Planning Commission agendas. So March third, March seventeenth and March twenty-fourth. Um, since no items were continued this evening, we actually have no items on March third. So that will allow us to cancel the March third meeting. So our next meeting would then be March seventeenth.
Wow.
And on March, so a month from today, uh, we would have two items, uh, both city code amendments. Uh, first of all, the, what we've been calling the residential livability standards. We had a study meeting on that, uh, a month or two back. And then the second item would be the miscellaneous issues ordinance that we also had a study meeting on. So two code amendments on, uh, March seventeenth. And then looking forward to March twenty-fourth, the only item we have on this, at this time for that agenda is an interim use permit request for a temporary pandemic facility. And you'll recall you did a code amendment a while back that, that was approved by the council. And now we have a user that would, uh, take advantage of that, uh, and apply for an interim use permit.
All right. Any, uh, anything else, Mr. Markagard?
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Uh, commission members, anything, any questions that have popped into your mind or clarifications or issues you'd like to bring up? All right. Not seeing any. Uh, with that, I would like to thank, um, our applicants tonight and staff for their presentations. And with that, we will conclude the February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two Planning Commission meeting. Thank you all.